Good evening. My name is Dr. John Taze. I'm chairman of the Selectment this year.
Name of the voice?
Joe Wabry.
I'm Dan Wood.
In effect?
Tony Allen Robbins.
John Renauld.
I would ask first that you please give back your cell phones. Turn them off or they will vibrate. Also, when it comes to the questions and answers period, will you have a microphone and a stand over here? If you will please, as a sign of chief, sign them in because we are making a record of this meeting and we do need those names for the record. Also, if you please remember, and I'm sure you will, to please be polite. No side conversations. If you wish to have a side conversation with the person next to you, please leave the room, go out into the hall so as not to disturb anyone else. If we have people here from out of town who wish to speak at this meeting, we do not have a problem with that. However, we do wish that you would wait until the end of the meeting and everyone in town has that chance to ask questions and then bring your questions to the town's home. With that, those of us at the head table are going to move down here to the front so that we will be able to watch the presentation. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is this on? Again, my name is Chuck Lawton. I'm with Planning Decisions. We're a consulting firm that does community and economic development work, and we were asked by the town to examine the fiscal implications of the choice before you. And what we've tried to do is examine options and come to a method for trying to think about the decision of going in or staying out. I'll do a brief presentation, and those of you who were at the Selectment meeting last week know that I'll try to keep it a lot briefer and focus on the key elements and facilitate questions that you may have about that. First of all, this is complicated stuff. Everybody here is engaged, and what I'm trying to do is present ways to think about the issue from a fiscal standpoint and not provide a correct answer. There is a correct answer. This is about the quality of education, how much people are willing to pay for the quality of education. And what I'm going to try to do is elucidate as best I can the factors that will affect how much it's going to cost to provide education under two different options. The first, just in terms of approach, what I would like to do is to deconstruct the most recent budget, the fiscal 2013 budget, asking in effect, had a Rundel been alone, what would it have cost to operate exactly the same thing that is operating in fiscal 13 alone versus in the RSU? And use that to illustrate a couple of important points that I think are necessary to think about going forward. And in many ways, education funding is like healthcare funding. You've got one arena over here where people actually do the work, teachers and students learning, and another arena over here, and hospitals and doctors and patients, and another arena over here, insurance companies, state bureaucracies, where they decide how much they're going to pay for what is being done. And so, part of the issue today is to think about that separate financing bureaucracy and how it affects what's paid for. So, the factors that create the difference are, first of all, the, what's called the EPS formula. The state of Maine provides money based on what it calls essential programs and services. It's a, in effect, a system of metrics that Augusta has that says, for this number of students, of this capability, this set of characteristics demographically, economically, this is what we think it ought to pay a cost, and this is what we'll help subsidize. If you want to spend more than that, that's certainly up to you, but the EPS is what the state says is a minimum acceptable level of financing for education in all the communities across the state. It then says, you in the state, in the municipality, have to provide a minimum mill rate towards that. The higher the mill rate, I mean, the higher the valuation in your town, the more you would end up having to pay, the less the state would provide, and vice versa. So, the EPS is determined, is used for two things. One, to decide what's the state minimum level of funding, and two, how much the state is going to contribute towards that. The second is new debt service, that there are proposals that will be considered for renovation of this school, renovation of the consolidated schools in Kennebunk and the high school in Kennebunk. That would be in addition to continuing operation of the existing schools. Then, there will be a question of operational efficiency. If a Rundel goes in alone, will it be able to operate this building, the facilities, the transportation, the maintenance, the special education needs, the technology needs, at the same cost per student as is true for the RSU as a whole? Or, will a Rundel alone, and this is a question for whomever would be on the school board managing that system, could we operate this more efficiently at a lower cost per student and lower the cost? Or, are we going to have diseconomies because it's a small school, we've got to have an administrator, we've got to have a superintendent, we have to have a special ed director, and our administrative costs are going to be above the current average, which would tend to make it more expensive? So, those are not, again, answers that I can decide or that you can do a mathematical formula to decide. It's going to be, how effectively can a standalone school system operate administratively? The next is special education. That's largely an actuarial question. Individuals with special needs come and go randomly in the population. People have certain extra needs. Today, many of those students are served through facilities available at the RSU. Were the town to withdraw from the RSU and not have those available, they could face substantial increases in cost for residential placement or special non-school placements simply depending upon the nature and number of students with special needs. So, that's, in a sense, a very spiky thing. If you had two or three students in a particular year, your cost might go way up, and in another year, they might go way down. So, looking at a share of last year's RSU total and saying, well, if we had 23% of the students, we presume all the students are, special needs are distributed equally across all the students, so we can operate at 23% of the state's, I mean, of the RSU's numbers, maybe we can survive. If we get more, it's going to cost more. If we get less, it might not cost that much. That's a judgment that the citizens are going to have to make. So, with all those factors in mind, then, what I wanted to do was to create alternative budgets and then examine implications for the longer term. So, the first point to be made about the EPS system is that, and this is Table four in the sheets, is that in the fiscal 2013 budget, which was only an RSU budget, the left-hand column here is a $35 million budget for the RSU, it gets allocated to a Rundel based upon an EPS and mill formula that says there was 3.3 million that was allocated to the RSU as a local contribution. Then, RSU operations over and above EPS were allocated on a 60-40 basis, $780,000, the adult education, the local-only RSU debt, which was part of a revolving loan fund that the RSU borrowed from to make improvements in all of the schools, that's allocated on a 60-40 basis. That brings a Rundel's total payment required in the RSU to 4.1 million, which, based on a municipal valuation of 385 million, came to $10.66, a thousand of municipal valuation. So, that's, in effect, the cost within the RSU in 2013. The question then becomes, if we were to operate independently of that, what might we do? And again, not to have made a recommendation for one or another, but simply to present alternatives for you to consider and think about as a way of, in effect, building a Rundel-alone budget. What I did was take the budget as it might be extracted from the RSU budget and say, let's look at options A, B, and C. Option A is the lowest cost, most efficient. This is the innovative and risk-taking, if you will, budget. The cost for the Mildredale Day School, taken directly out of the RSU budget, about 1.57 million. Tuition for six to eight to Thornton Academy and to nine to 12 to any public school, it could be Thornton Academy, but there are some that go to Pittford, some that have gone to Kennebunk. Then, in the non-student-specific special education, transportation, facilities, maintenance, system administration, insured value factor is a fancy way of saying amortization on buildings for the Thornton Academy. It's a, an allowance for capital used in the schools, their facilities. You don't have to pay a bond to pay off their mortgage, but in addition to the tuition, there's a factor, and that's paid for in the state allocation. So, you add that, include the local revolving loan debt, and take, that comes to a total of 6.7, basically 6.8 million. That's one theoretical, not necessarily ideal, but minimum cost possible a Rundel-alone I've added two things to future budget. Another thing, I'm presuming, and again, it's not that I'm presuming, I'm using it just for illustrative purposes, that a Rundel accounts for 23% of all the students. I took special education and transportation and took 23% of the RSU's total budget and say, that's a Rundel. Now, if a Rundel takes 25% to transport its students, or 30% to provide special education because they've got longer distances or more special needs students, that's going to be wrong for illustrative purposes, that's what I started with. And then I said, assume that a Rundel can operate more efficiently, and for facilities, maintenance, and system administration, it's 15%. Now, I didn't go in and say, well, you could, somebody got up at class meetings and, no way you could ever run that for 140, that you couldn't even hire a couple of people, couldn't hire a school board. Again, I'm not saying this is a management exercise, and that's the way to do. What I'm saying is, if you were to sit down in a room and say, let's build a budget, this is one way to start looking at it and say, well, can we run it more efficiently than the per-student basis? If it was 23%, it would be more expensive. In fact, that's my third option over there. But that's simply a challenge to the administration. The first difference for option B, and again, this is simply to say, you think about it, can you run a single system on that money? I added 324,000 to special education because that was the average over the last four years that a Rundel used services that, had the RSU not been available, would have caused, required special placement that would have cost more than was provided in the RSU budget. So, if you're going to go it alone and have some risk funding available for special needs students that historically have, in fact, required those sorts of services, and it was more or less proportional to the average of the last four years, it added another 300,000, bringing the total from 6.8 to about 7.2. Again, is it real? Is it, will it happen? You just have to go through an actual budget and see. But for purposes of thinking about your choices, I thought it was a useful exercise. Then, the third option, I said, is it realistic to think we could run this school, we, the citizens of a Rundel, could run this school at the same, and a system that oversees special education, oversees transportation, oversees the relationship with the schools to whom the middle and high school students would be tuition, at less than the administrative cost of the system? I said, well, maybe not. Maybe we ought to consider a, at least proportional to the system, 23% of the total system costs, which would be directly proportional to 23% of the students. That bumps the Rundel-only budget up to 7.5. So, again, I'm not saying any of these are the answer, right answer, they're just ways to think about the choices that you face. How much risk are you willing to take? How much efficiency do you think you can achieve? And what's the additional special education cost that you make might occur? Yeah, running those through the mill rate system, the cost per thousand for the total, since the state contribution would be the same, and the local requirement would be the same, since it's the EPS applied to the very same students, very same school, very same teachers, and support for teachers, and materials, and all that, and the same mill rate. So, all of those are the same for all three options. The only difference is the local extra, and that would then run from 4.2 to 4.5 to 4.8, and the mill rate would be 1084, 1168, or 1259, under the three options. So, that's simply a way of thinking about projections into the future. If I've got to build a budget, and I've got to vote on what budget I think is going to be true here, let me think of some, instead of just reacting off the top of my head, let me think about a couple of options and see what they might be, and then which ones do I think are realistic, which ones do I think maintain the quality of education I want, and which ones am I willing to pay for? Then, the next factor, looking forward, would be to add to that capital improvement projects that are being considered. And the first thing I have to say on that is, every single day, a capital improvement project is talked about or cost estimated, it's going to be out of date the next day. We had a lot of discussion in the last meeting about, well, there was a budget that was presented, and I got something sent that was dated 2011. You've got to stop at some point and say, what do we think the costs are going to be, knowing that if you don't do it for another year, the costs are probably going to go up? Until the bond is written, you don't really know. But in order to illustrate the effects of a specified capital improvement program, and then look at the relative effects, we could say, well, it may go from 4 million to 4.2 or from 45 to 47, but relatively speaking, it's going to affect all of them. So, what we did was look at, one, a $45 million improvement to the Kennebunk High School, a $4.2 million project for the Kennebunk Consolidated Schools, and a $4.0 million renovation to the Mildredale Day School, and say, take that to the main bond bank, run it through their amortization, what would they have decided on October 3rd, 2012, had that bond been issued, what would it have cost? And look at that in comparison. And for the Rundel alone, where debt service under the Rundel alone would be the 16,000 of the revolving loan that's still asked to be retired, plus the cost of amortizing a $4 million loan over 20 years at 3.80% for the improvement of this building, and that in fiscal 2015 would be, presuming that was the first year that the bond was issued in the first amortization was required, would be 372,654.97 cents per thousand. If we then looked at the staying in the RSU, in which the entire debt service on all three projects would be borne by all three communities and allocated out under three possible different options, what would the cost to a Rundel be? Under RSU A, local-only, 60-40 on the three projects, the debt service, again, including the 16,000 visiting volu- loan, would be 715,000 in 2015, if it was the same debt, but the allocation was 90% value, 10% students. And by and large, that favors a Rundel because Kennebunk and Kennebunk Board have a greater valuation, and so, the more the cost is distributed on the basis of valuation, and the less on students, the more it would advantage a Rundel. So, the second, running through the same system, the amortization cost is 530,000, the third is 469. So, obviously, if you divvy up the very same debt, and you've got it based on a 60-40 split, a Rundel has 715, on a 90-10 split, it has 530, and 100-0, it's 469. Again, that's going to depend on how that decision is made, number one, are there going to be improvements? Number two, what's the allocation going to be? But again, those are the future considerations that Rundel voters have to think about today to make that decision. So, putting all this together, then, and this is where I really think we can focus a lot of attention and questions, I've put together, in effect, six options. The three, a Rundel alone, with the difference between A, B, and C being bare-bones, super-efficient, bare-bones, super-efficient, plus some special ed allocation, and more or less proportional in operational efficiency to the RSU, as the three, a Rundel alone, that's the 68 to 75 total budget, can you operate your own system within that? And then, within the RSU, where there is no total budget, is the RSU budget that gets allocated, the major differences are that the state contribution is going to be lower, 2.6, basically 2.7 million for the Rundel alone versus 2.8, and that's because of the way the EPS system allocates tuition students to Thornton Academy at state average, whereas going to a Rundel, they're a higher tuition rate. It's purely a question of, a Rundel is evaluated, I mean, not a Rundel, Thornton Academy is evaluated at state average cost, the RSU 21 is evaluated at their own actual submitted evaluated cost determined by the state. So, that staying in, going alone, you disadvantage yourselves by getting a lower EPS rate. Staying in, you get a higher EPS payment from the state. The local requirement's going to be the same all the way across, because whatever the state mandated mill, minimum mill rate, applied to whatever the value is, doesn't make any difference what system you're in, that's the local minimum. The only difference, then, is going to be the local extra, both the current, what you're paying for for operations before any capital improvement, and the local extra debt service, which would be the totals here, it's going to be the same for the Rundel alone, since you've got 100% of the debt service on just this building, and then would be the three options in the, how the RSU would vote to allocate all three projects to a Rundel. And this presents, then, a range of values in terms of the ultimate cost per thousand from a low of 1180 in the bare-bones, super-efficient, no extra special ed, a Rundel alone, to a Rundel-alone option C, running from 1180 to 1356. The, obviously, the cheapest of the staying in the RSU would be the 100-0 at a cost of 1188, and the others would be in between. So, to summarize, and this is where I would say, this analysis has taken me, in terms of what I think is important for the citizens of a Rundel to think about, is what are the odds that you can hit certain budget targets, given your view of the administrative efficiency, the potential of this system to operate, and what's your estimation of the likely vote on the capital improvement projects in the broader RSU? on the capital improvement projects in the broader RSU? My sense of the topics for consideration in closing are the EPS system for...
Your microphone.
Is it working now? Sorry, I didn't wanna let you hear the conclusions. There is a systematic difference in EPS rates that is simply built into the structure of the way the state aid is allocated. That's conclusion number one. Two, special education is an actuarial risk. It's simply a question of how much risk are you gonna be willing to take in going it alone and not having the broader services of the RSU that you might have to seek at more expensive locations should those needs arise? Three, what's your ability to innovatively, at low cost, efficiently manage, be a superintendent, be a director of maintenance and facilities, be a director of transportation, be a facilities technology assistant in whatever ways would be required for this building? The fourth would be the concern, and this was expressed in the previous meeting, the budgetary risk to the ML Day School alone. If middle school and high school students' costs are locked in with contracts, then the only budgetary flexibility remains the elementary school, and so if there is, after all, we gotta cut a budget, then the pressure is to cut it on the elementary students in this school, and again, that's a risk that would be taken if, if going alone choice is made. And then finally, the going it alone does reduce the long-term capital expenditure costs to just this building, as long as you could continue to tuition middle school and high school students to other places, so that, and that risk itself is divided into what's the rest of the district gonna do, is that cost, number one, are they gonna approve the project, the high school consolidated and this Mildred Dell Day School? And number two, if they do, how are they gonna divvy it up, 6040, 9010, or 100? So to me, perhaps the best way to, and I'll turn it back over to Todd and committee, but in some ways, the list of options might be the most useful thing to focus on and then talk about those questions. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd really like to turn it over to the committee and have them manage the rest of the meeting.
Anyone who'd like to ask a question, if you could go to the microphone over there, there is a sign-up sheet over there. Please try and keep your questions and your comments to three minutes, we wanna try and get everyone in as much as possible. You may also, if you wish to speak, you may line up over there, you don't have to sit in your seat and wait until one person has left the microphone, you can stand right there. So if you would like to join?
Could we start with the committee question? Do we have any questions?
Oh, something, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
First question I have, I'll listen to both categories of side of the group, the district office. What would be mandatory, the state is going to require that we go along, what will we have to do in the administration that we put in our hand, or are they mandated by the state?
Well, there would have to be, and partly would be the structure of the board, is there a elected school board and that entity that's expensive, and then there would have to be a superintendent or chief school, whatever you wanna call the director, then there would have to be a curriculum or program director and a special education director and some, get these to be part of time, there would have to be someone filling certain positions. Yes. And then that would be the superintendent, special education, curriculum and program director. Thank you.
Yeah, on page 12, where you talk about the fiscal year 15, if Arundel was alone, what would the intent of the plan is to pay off that $1 million bond? In the withdrawal agreement, there's a $131,000 payoff, so that debt would not be carried forward as a standalone district? Is that number, was this, let's say it goes from 16,429 down to 15,643, my understanding is it's the same payment all 10 years, because it's a 0% loan. And also, I guess in the 372,654, I wanna know if the 16,429 was included in that number?
Yes.
It is. Because if we're alone, we're gonna pay that debt off, so that debt would not carry beyond the fiscal year 15.
Right. In this, and it's included in the section on the carry forward, I presume that the amortization of that revolving loan would be maintained and that there would be a distribution of the fund balance at the RSU level, which nobody would know, but was estimated by the superintendent to be about 2 million, and that of that, Arundel would get 250,000 and that that would go into the fund balance. So to keep it as comparable as possible, I presume that debt would continue to be paid down, that 16,000 annual revolving loan. Again, that may not be the way it actually works out materially, it wouldn't substantially affect the debt service.
It wouldn't lower that column by about $16,000 each year.
Right. And it would reduce Arundel to a zero fund balance, as opposed to the 250,000 that it would, might reasonably be affected to have under the assumption of the distribution of those obligations while maintaining payment on that debt.
That was part of the withdrawal agreement that took the longest amount of time, was how that was gonna be disseminated. There's a $131,000 balance that's gonna be used from the undesignated funds to pay off Arundel's debt, he put into an interest-bearing account, and the payment would be taken out of that, so it won't be paid annually by Arundel. So if we're a standalone, that 372 or 654 should be around $16,000 less, and each subsequent year would also be approximately $16,000 less. Is that, Tom, is that?
We set up a $131,000, it's a separate side, and I think 250, that is estimated, so that comes from the fund balance, could be after that, just.
So not according to what the totals are here, but again, if that's the way that you wanted to manage it, that certainly would be the case.
That's the way it is gonna be managed if we pass the plan. It's not whether that's how we're going to, if you go for the plan, that's how it's, in the withdrawal agreement, that's how.
Right, and what I'm saying is that that reduction then of that number by $16,000 could be taken, done and taken out of that, that number.
Any other question?
It's not so much a question, but I want everybody to be very clear in regards to the 6040, 9010, 100. The 100 was not even on the table, period. The cost-sharing agreement that was not sent before the voters prior to this, that was requested to be, was the 9010, but that was not sent to the voters, and therefore, the only allegation of how these would be done at the current moment, and I want it to be very clear, because I don't want people to think that if you stay in the RSU, that it's gonna go to 9010. The only cost-sharing agreement that is currently in place is a 6040, that's the only thing that is in place today. I did sit on the cost-sharing committee, we did put together a plan to do a 9010, but that was not sent to the voters, nor do we know how that would end up. So the only thing that's in place today, this is 6040, and I want people to just be understanding that that is the one that is currently in place, thank you.
And to clarify that a little further, we would have to vote to stay in the RSU, vote to change the cost-sharing to 9010, then come before the voters of all three towns, and that would have to be approved in order for it to go to 9010.
I just wanna say that the last version of the cost-sharing agreement that I saw, and I agree, and I would like everybody to understand, that that has to be voted on by all three communities to be, to be effective. There is no vote on that at this point. But the last version of the cost-sharing agreement I saw, Diane, had local debt, construction debt, would be at 100, if that were to be in fact voted on and voted into place. That was corrected, that was corrected several times by several different individuals, and I received a copy of the final cost-sharing agreement that was agreed on by the committee, that was 9010 over EPS, debt would have been the only thing that was considered 100% state valuation. But please do keep in mind that that is one of the risks that Chuck discusses, is there's no guarantee that that cost-sharing formula will be revised, but it is on the table, we just don't know when that would happen in the event Arundel stays in the RSU.
That also requires a two-thirds majority vote of all three communities as well. And when that, that shift becomes a burden of Kennybunkport, so if passing from Kennybunkport is highly unlikely, whether Kennybunk or Arundel can carry the vote or not in that case remains to be seen.
If I may, I tried to sympathize it down to something.
Water!
Done?
Heavy.
Okay. I tried to boil it down to something I could understand, very simple. If we stay in the RSU, the big, the cost will be the cost-sharing. If we do not stay in the RSU, the state allocation, because we are alone, would be more costly for us than if we stayed in the RSU. That's really what I vote on, doesn't it?
Yes, those are true.
The question, the question is, do we wanna stay in the RSU and worry and deal with any, any new facilities, okay? Or do we wanna go with a loan and understand that we're on a loan and that automatic the cost is gonna increase than what it would in the RSU if we, if we go with a loan?
Not so much the cost, but the revenue.
Revenue, yes.
Revenue. Yes.
Really boils down to just those two pieces.
Well, I think.
We have control over some of them, we have no control over some others.
Correct, I would, I would say that the administrative and special education and putting embrace in the elementary school are important elements of budgetary consideration, they're not automatic, but there are, there would be challenges in the go-to loans system.
That's what I see. I just wanna add on, on kind of the same note, that debt service and construction projects are something that will also need to go out to vote to the public. Those are numbers that we're working with that are projections, there's no guarantee, it could go up, it could go down, it could get voted out completely. I don't see the likelihood of that happening, but that is another unknown, another variable that we're dealing with in this very complex process.
I think, I think along with the financial issues, and I know that there are many people in town that have this sentiment, because I think this is one of the reasons why this was brought forth, is not only is this just an issue of finances, but I think that this is also an issue where some people feel that they would like more say and better control over what happens within the school. So I don't think it's just a matter of finances, I think finances play a big part of it, but I think that there were a lot of people who would like to see that control come back within the town.
Go ahead, next, their name, please.
My name is Bob Stewart, I'm just gonna go on. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the last topic that we discussed. So the allocation concerns that we expressed are in regards to the Kennybunk project, approval of reallocation, is that, is that a similar vote as what took place about a year ago? Is that the same type of vote where Georgetown looks at the reallocations of the same process that we went through before?
The exact same vote.
Okay. And am I correct in that Kennybunkport is the only town that approved the stage in that Arundel and Kennybunk, but did our Arundel ultimately sort of cut off our nose despite our face on, on that vote? And so the numbers that we're talking about here are reflective of us having voted no to that, and Kennybunkport having voted yes, but it failing as a result of our no and Kennybunk's no. So from a, from a finance perspective, we have shot, cut off our nose despite our face on that issue. We also elected not to do the Diane contract of the contract, which also would save several millions of dollars over the course of these numbers that are being shown here, is that right?
No.
No? It would not have saved the RSU $7 million over the course of this next five to 10 years?
That's debatable.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's something we had to talk about, but I can prove it to you.
I'm, I'm not, well, it actually isn't here to talk about. What we're here to talk about is the financial decision that's connected to this, and the point that was just made by this, by the lady, I'm sorry, was that we needed, we'd like to have this be part about the control that's being allocated to the people in Arundel, and past performance is the best indicator of future success, these types of decisions don't seem to be working. these types of decisions don't seem to be working in our favor as pet experience. So could somebody else answer the question as to whether or not we would have saved money had we bought out that contract?
I would perform my time, Bob, and unfortunately I don't have that data.
Okay, sir?
All the financial numbers that we had did show that over the course of years after buying out the contract and giving all of our junior high kids choice of going to either junior high, that the RSU would have ultimately saved a lot of money.
Thank you, thank you very much. So my understanding then is, tell me if I'm incorrect, is that it would have been, the RSU would have been starting in a more favorable position for all of these discussions had those two things taken place.
The new cost-sharing proposal goes much further than the previous cost-sharing proposal that was rejected.
In Rundle's favor?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
The new cost, not the old, not going ahead and reject it.
Correct. There were several things in the old cost-sharing that were... The cost-sharing that was put before the voters the last time was a cost-sharing on new debt only. It was not at a ninety-ten. And along with that were a couple of clauses. There was no protection for keeping your elementary school open. There was a penalty, as a matter of fact, I believe, if you chose to keep your school open if the RSU voted no. Which meant that the town would have to pick up the cost of the school. Then there was... Correct, but he asked for clarification on what we had voted on. And I think that is important, that people understand that the cost-sharing that is what that we voted on is not the same as what's on the map. And then the third piece to that was is that it locked in that cost-sharing so that it did not be reopened again until two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. And my last question on this issue is, just, I was a little confused about the discussion that was going on in regards to the sixty-fourty, which is now, versus the proposal. I'm not exactly sure, based on what Todd said, that the last thing he saw was one-hundred-zero. You said that was a number on the table. And is that, is that the number that would impact the table?
It was ninety-ten over EPS or a hundred percent for construction projects, or any kind of construction project was a hundred zero.
So for purposes of this, which of those two would it, from a little confusion?
If you go to the one-hundred-zero column, Bob? In table eleven, one-hundred-zero takes into consideration for current local debt. The debt service is calculated at a one-hundred-zero rate, and the remainder, a chunk of it. The debt service on the very same debt, where Rundle, there, an allocation based on a hundred percent value, zero students, would be four-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. For the same debt at a ninety-ten, it would be five-hundred-and-thirty thousand. And for the same debt at a sixty-fourty, it would be seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So that clearly the allocation agreement would affect drastically Rundle's share of the cost of all three.
I understand that. My only question still is a little fuzzy, and because it's so important, I'm just going to ask again. Are we talking about, I heard that it's only sixty-fourty on the table now, but then I heard two different things after that. One was that the proposal wasn't coming forward at ninety-ten, which would have me looking at, you know, column five. And then I heard Todd say, well, actually, the last thing he saw was one-hundred-zero for construction, which would have me looking at column six. So did I understand that correct? That the last thing you saw, Todd, from the other communities, is a proposal that we should be considering column six, or we would be considering column seven?
That's right.
Thank you very much.
If I may, I'd like to suggest that we'd like to look to the future on this. All that stuff that happened in the past is past. And let us move forward tonight. Let's start bringing up all the old stuff. Obviously, it's still very hot, there are hot topics, there are hot issues, and it's not going to be productive. It's not going to be productive at all. Let's focus on where we're going and ask the questions so we can get some answers and where we can make informed decisions. So let's come together on this and act in a good place.
Pamela Werther. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Lawton for taking a very difficult subject and trying to make it understandable. Still struggling a bit. You can just go to table eleven?
Yes.
Because my thought is, is that, as you see all these people here, all the people that are at home and can make it out tonight, that are going to get a copy of this report, are going to focus on table eleven, the cost of budget alternatives. My question to you, Mr. Lawton, is which of these options for a Rundle, A, B, or C, the first three columns, is the most realistic? And I guess what I would follow up with is option A, actually even a viable option, because we do not have the special education requirements that we have historically required for the past, required for the past five years for fifteen students. Can you answer that?
Yes. If by reasonable, you mean probability of being able to meet that cost, then I would say that option number one is a very difficult standard to meet. That is, with the odds of, if you were to put odds on meeting those, that would be low because, number one, for the reason that you're saying, and for number two. Secondly, meeting the administrative departments at the efficiency levels that are projected. I'm not saying it's reasonable or unreasonable. I'm saying it's an extremely hard target to hit.
Okay. So again, for the people who weren't able to make it out tonight and who are going to read this report, you basically said option A would be difficult at best to actually achieve. So my point would be, for the people, again, who are not here tonight, why don't we take our left hand and cover up that first column? Because they're not real numbers, or they're not very viable. The real numbers are, but they're not really a viable option statistically. So now we're left with option B, C, and then the three alternatives are staying within the district. And seeing we're not talking about quality of education, and we're not really talking about the local control, but we're only talking about costs, then I hope the people in our community then would now only consider option B, C, and the three RSU options, and make a decision based on that.
My name is Saul Fetter. And a lot of these numbers I probably don't really understand, but I do know one thing. I sat on the budget vote for two years, and I watched the RSU twenty-one dictate exactly how we would educate our students, where we would educate them, how we would educate them, whether or not this school would stay open or whether it was closed. People at Rundle had no say in it. And we sat and held our breaths until we found out what the question was going to cost us every year. Now, when I first came to Rundle, I didn't know I was even going to run. Okay? I'm from out of state, my wife was in New England, but she was from Maine. She dragged me out of here. And I put three kids into the elementary school called Milverdale Day. And they educated those children, okay? And the strangest thing about it was, you know, they were alone then. And up until two or three years ago, we were still alone. And we get a fine job. Everything wasn't perfect, but at least we had control of our children, of our school, and the director was going to take. Now, when we start talking about high schools and middle schools, well, we send our kids to Thornton. Okay? And Thornton hasn't improved, whatever they've done a number of times. They can't look to us for a dime, whether it's the middle school or the high school. Okay? All we have to do is run an elementary school. And believe me, okay, I've been out in these areas quite a bit. And you're all a bunch of Yankees who are pretty smart, and you can run an elementary school very well. And at this point, you know, the idea of staying in the RSU twenty-one, okay, so that I can dictate in another town, okay, what my kids are going to do, how they're going to be educated, I would really be against that. And none of my kids are elementary age anymore. They're in high school or they're graduating. My concern is about the people who are in this town now and want their kids educated in this school by their own people. And I think that's really the primary thing. We're not talking about a great deal of money. We're not talking about, you know, the good or bad of anything. We're talking about what really should happen in this community. And let me tell you, when we went to the RSU, the only reason I voted for it was because they said if we hadn't do it, or we'd be penalized. If it depended the other way, if there was no penalty, I'd have never voted for it because the school was at it. It can be some improvements that the town could have done. I think I'm done since I've probably run out of time.
My name is Nelson Baloo. I've lived now and around me for thirteen years, and I'm also a math teacher at the middle school of Kennybunks in the RSU. I do want to go back for just a minute to if we had bought out that contract, because those costs, if we decide to stay in the RSU, my understanding is, even when the contract with Thorn Academy expires, middle school students will still have the choice as to whether they want to go to Tams or not. At the time, in order to make it so that the district would make money or break even, it was, the figure that was come up with was we would need eight to ten new students come over to middle school of Kennybunks, out of each class that would then be coming into sixth grade. And assuming that those ten, eight to ten students would stay through seventh, eighth, ninth, and high school, and not leave to go back, which you can't make those assumptions, but that's what we were going. The reason I became so interested in it is because I couldn't get my hands around the fact that that's all it was going to take to do it. And so I met with administrators and central office staff, and I did all of the figures out myself. And it came out eight to ten students based on tuition rates at the time. And the reason I know those are accurate, I presented them at a school board meeting with Thorn Academy people there. They did not dispute them. And I was also asked by board members, would I be willing to go and have that videotape to show the entire public if it came down to that? So I know those figures were accurate. So that's about how many would take. If more than ten out of each incoming sixth grade class came over to the middle school of Kennybunks, the district would more than have broken even on that contract. So that takes care of that one as far as I'm concerned. Now, I have two other quick comments. One of them is, you know, I can read the figures. Whether you're talking about revenues, whether you're talking about expenses, the overall bottom line is, we entered into this process to find out whether it was estimated that staying alone would cost us more or less than staying in the RSU. Am I correct? Now, we have completed this study. I'd like a very simple answer, because I think I know from what I've worked in my career. Would we cost more or less by staying alone? In your opinion, because that's what people are looking to see, is what is it going to cost us? In part. Would it cost more or less, in your opinion? That I need to, it's a simple yes or no. It would cost us more or not?
You addressing that question to me?
I'm addressing it, I'm addressing it, I'm addressing it to anyone that can give us an answer so that when we go to the polls in November, we will be educated and know how that's going to influence what we vote. I don't know who that person is. Would you, would you come to that conclusion if this was the school district that you lived in and we're going to be voting?
That's a difficult question, not because I don't want or can't answer it. I'm trying to maintain a position here of, I'm working for the town. I'm a member of Contract Committee, advise, and I don't want to be recommending how to vote to citizens in the community. I've presented what I think are reasonable ways of thinking about the decision. That said, were I to put probabilities to this choice, I would say that the likelihood is that the cost would be greater to leave the RSU than to stay in the RSU.
All right, that's good. I'll accept that. The, my other comment is, and I know not everybody goes by test scores and so forth, but unfortunately, since I'm a teacher, whenever it comes down to how well our school is set to be performing and other teachers doing their job, it tends to come down with that the community and the school board looks at the test scores. And unless I have missed something somewhere, since we have been in this RSU, our student performance has improved fairly dramatically. If that is the case, that they have improved fairly dramatically, and it would probably cost us less to stay in, I don't have to read between the lines to know how I'm going to vote.
That's a tough act to follow. First of all, Mr. Lawton, I'd like to, my name is Jack Reeves. I'd like to thank you for this study. It is very comprehensive. I spent almost all of the ten years we've lived here working on school budgets. Six years on Rundle's budget committee, three years in the regional planning board, and three years on the RSU school board and the budget committee. I think I know these numbers better than anybody else in this whole town. I'm tired, and I got a lot of time. I do have some questions for clarification on the tables. First of all, on table seven, if we can put that type up on the screen. I've covered my first point there. It is true that tuition costs a total of two, two-point-six-four million for middle and high school tuition are fixed. They're locked in. You can't do a thing about them. You have no control over those dollars. Simple write a check. Milverdale Day's one-point-five-seven million is about eighty percent salary and benefits. There isn't any real world in that country, and those costs either. For all practical purposes, they are fixed, and the last three years, via the RSU budgets, we've been willing to lay down all six schools and have cut costs very drastically, just in order to keep all the people that we have now. And isn't it also true that on the fifteen percent assumption for facilities costs, if you're gonna get from twenty-three down to fifteen, turn out the lights, turn off the heat, fire the two people who are the students? Those are the choices? Question mark? Just kidding. I hope you don't have to come up with that. Assistant administration on the other hand, requires following functions. You've estimated them initially at the low end of thirty-four thousand.
I were, yeah, we don't say that.
The question was, what comprises those costs? You've got a superintendent, part-time, superintendent's assistant, full-time, part-time bookkeeper, special ed director, who's gonna be full-time by law, central office expenses, school board expenses, legal consultancy, hiring services, insurance, an IT specialist. Here's servers that don't exist now, and annual software licenses, that are very costly. My guess is, the cost is somewhere between three hundred and fifty K. Is that all the criteria you asked for?
Yes, if I were you, that would be a very reasonable estimate. Again, this was option, all of these options were variations on the proportional to the RSU cost or not, as well as illustrating the challenge of leaving the RSU. I was not, and it's not my position to try to manage or structure a school, or to go through and build a budget up from the bottom. Mine was to try to illustrate fiscal implications, and I agree that fifteen percent was simply a way of saying, if you wanna look at a super efficient, super lean option, that's one way of going about it. I didn't try to construct that, and that's why I say that in probability terms, that's a stretch. It's there not because I think it's an option to, you have to consider it, but that I built it up with a personnel staff in mind. I used it as an illustration, the same as I did the special ed education based on experiences of the past, and the twenty-three percent based on simply the proportional share of students. None of them were based on going in and trying to say, how much does the principal make, or assistant principal, or IT director. That's a management task that is beyond the scope of this primary.
Thank you. I think I heard that the costs are likely to be higher than lower during the fifteen and twenty-three. Let me print the table eights. Pre-aided, the spend costs. How confident are you to say those costs really need to be in any dialogue in the
Well, to the extent that they were actual students receiving services through the RSU over the past four years, they're a reflection of history. The cost of alternative placement, the seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, or the difference there of three hundred and twenty-four, is actual based upon quotes obtained by the special ed directors.
So assuming they do need it to be in the budget, and most of the other costs in the budget are fixed and not controllable, there is any real world to take other costs out of that option? Is that the essence of it?
I think the essence of it was that it's a variable cost that is gonna be different year to year, and that would be substantially greater if the only avenue of service was a non-RSU placement.
Thank you. We estimated that the annual increase in cost for going alone and designing is in the range of a dollar eighty-one, rate increases for taxpayers. I just stood looking at the right table. Let's go to table eleven. Using the numbers that show a hundred and eighty K, thirty-six cents of annual savings by remaining in the RSU 21.
You may have a different.
Again, I'll take yesterday's table. Let me, let me make this point. I think clearly, option A on table eleven is not a viable option. Going alone represents a loss some part between B and C. Today, if we were not to stay in the RSU, and have the sixty-fourty option, or to stay within the RSU, have the sixty-fourty option, that is cost sharing, we're not a group, we show a bill rate of twelve fifty-two. And I believe too, that the column that's later than ninety-ten is also invalid, it is irrelevant from a debt service standpoint, to the three-town cost-sharing committee agreement. That was ninety-ten for above EPS dollars, and a hundred zero for due debt, as I clarify here. So this column two is not relevant. My point would be, and these are numbers you might wanna write down on your copy of table eleven, if you look at option C, as you're basing on a thirteen fifty-six, and you look at within RSU sixty-four, sixty-fourty, the difference in savings is four hundred thousand dollars a year, that's twelve fifty-two, and that's a lower tax rate of dollar four. Good, within RSU one hundred zero, that's a savings of six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars per year, and a delta of a dollar sixty-eight, those are big numbers. We're talking about a twenty-year time span, that's twelve million bucks in savings over twenty years. I understand this is the extension of these tables correctly? With that, all of the things being equal, ignoring inflation, would that be a valid assumption?
Yes, this is a one-year look.
I'll save my column as a recommendation.
I'm Leah Lowry, and I just had one thing. Diane had mentioned that this really wasn't about anything, well, mentioned that this could be also about local control. And I guess my point to that is, I wanna know where our local control is. We have contracted out sixth through twelfth grade, we have no say over their curriculum, we have no board there. In fact, I sat in on meetings when the reading scores were low for the middle school, and was told I had no say as to how they did their programming in a public meeting. I'm sure it wasn't recorded though, because we didn't used to do minutes the way we do now. My second point is that eighty percent of the Mildredale Day budget is contracted out to teachers. So what we are local control, what our local control is, it ends up being that little portion that is programming and staffing. So frankly, I don't want to have that all on my, on our shoulders. I wanna be able to look at six schools and cut paper budgets if I have to, instead of Spanish. I wanna be able to combine services, like copying, so that we can still have RTI and be in compliance with the state, which we were not before. And frankly, adequate education, that's not in my vocabulary. Stellar education is, and we have stellar education right now, at a deal. And if you guys are looking at these tables like I am, it's cheaper to be in the RSU, it's better for our kids to be in the RSU, it's better for our facility to be in the RSU, and I feel really frustrated that we've been let down this past so long, and our children are suffering. And I just, I sat in meetings with the Arundel School Board prior to being in the RSU, I sat in the RSU meetings, I was on the RSU board. I can't sit through another meeting of whether we're gonna raise the price of milk, so that we can have enough money in our cafeteria. I don't wanna sit through another meeting where we talk about whether or not we need to cut books from first grade so that we can have enough for the fifth grade. It's not okay. We don't have to do that right now. And it's not fair to make our kindergarten through fifth grade pay the price for our sixth through twelfth graders. They will have that choice to go to Tams, they will have that choice to go to TA, they will also have a choice to go to MSK, they will also have a choice to go to Kennybunk High School. And gosh darn it, doesn't that sound like everybody gets what they want, and our kindergarten through fifth grade ends up with a stellar education, and we don't have to keep stealing from them to pay for our older children? And that's all I have to say about this.
I'm Rachel Ryan, a student at MLDA. I volunteer in the school for the past five years. And I would like to follow up, Leah, by saying, also, there are questions about local control. If you feel that you want local control back, I would ask anybody to go, were you in the school over the past five years? Were you physically present as a teacher, or a volunteer, or working in an after-school program during the past five years, to see what local control was like, and what it did for our school prior? We had a good school, I won't put the school down at all, it was a great school. But now, it's, as Leah said, it is excellent. The changes that were brought about in RSU, if you were there physically present to see what was going on during that change, I don't know how you would wanna go back to local control, if you did not do it to the same caliber as it's being done now.
Too tough action to come out. I have no kids in school, as you thought, I guess, I did have at one time though, and I moved a lot, and I looked for towns where my kids did have a great income.
Sam?
Yeah.
Could you state your name?
Sure, my name is Sam Ball, resident of Arundel, been here since two thousand and seven. I wanna talk a little bit about why kids go in that, for your financial future, even if you don't have kids in school. You go to, you look around for what makes a town a good place to live, and I know the website calls for, calls for, for unilaterally a great place to have businesses and to live. What makes a great, what makes a town great? One of the most important things I put to you is school, good schools. And I'm born, this is borne out by some comments that have been made by the National Association of Realtors, who say that that's one of the most, one of the strongest influences that influences outliers to the town they live in. When business or, and its employees are considering a move to their community, one of the first questions they ask is, tell me about the public schools, and their curriculum, and their activities. It's been brought up before, and in Arundel, as part of RSU 21, we're able to say that our kids have great opportunities for learning, and good facilities, good teachers, inspired administrators in the program. Test scores have gone up, it's been commented before. If we pull up and make the one decision, we lose probably most of that. More importantly, perhaps for those of us who don't have kids in school, is, how does the school affect you? I put to you that property values increases if more people desire to live within a particular school district in town. Families and children are willing to pay more to live in a community with good schools. Homebuyers who plan, homebuyers who plan in private schools, or those without children, like me, benefit from communities with strong schools. As long as a community maintains high-quality public schools, then property values will be more likely to rise. When school dis, school, the school district cannot have the fundamental schools otherwise fail to value the education to children, then school quality will decline. Great teachers and administrators will go elsewhere. Great students will go with their families to other towns. MLDA test scores will drop back to where they were before. Arundel will develop a reputation as a second-level town in the city. And our community will see new businesses and homebuyers choosing to go elsewhere. And what will be the result? Result of, the result will be our real estate value will decrease. What for most of us is our largest single financial asset will suffer. Even if you don't plan on selling your property soon, at some time, your hair is probably well. So if you care about the value of your home in Arundel, vote no. Staying in RSU 21 makes good for real estate sense.
My name is Amy Bash, I have two students here at MLDA, who have been here before the RSU took over, and now that we are part of the RSU, I'm trying not to get emotional about this shit. But the quality of the education that these students are getting now that they're in the RSU is beyond what was being offered when we stood alone. We had books in the library that hadn't been updated since the eighties, because everybody knows what gets cut when you don't have the money. These kids get the benefit of the Education Foundation, now that we're part of the RSU, who's done quite a bit for this school, I don't know if people realize that, but, I'm totally all over the place, but I just can't tell you, as a parent, who only has a couple years left in this school, but knows that the generation coming through, that's our community. You want local control? Volunteer. Be here at the PTA meeting. Join a committee. Be part of what's going on here. It's so important, and I just can't say enough about how positive it's been since we've been in RSU, and that's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Jim Jones, I live here in Arundel. The question that I have is, we have a contract with Tams. What happens when that contract runs out and they don't wanna renew it? Where do our middle school students go if we're not part of the RSU? Right now, they have, they have a choice. If the contract disappears, they can go to Kennybunk. They have a choice to go to Tams anyway, but where do the students go if Thornton Academy decides to not renew that contract at any point in the future?
I'll attempt to answer that question, Jim. Arundel does not have school choice currently for mid-level students. In the event that Thornton Academy would decide not to take mid-level students from the town of Arundel, we would have to find another community that would accept those students. That would be, and I haven't been here long enough, I didn't go through that process several years ago when that was all negotiated, but that would be a discussion with other communities in the area has happened in the past to find someone that was willing to accept our students. Now, to that point, we, there is a letter of commitment from Thornton Academy that states that they are willing to extend that contract should that opportunity arise. But that's a letter of commitment. That is, that would go once again to vote to ratify a contract if it were decided to be negotiated. And I guess the opportunities are wide open should Thornton Academy not come to on that deal.
But right now, we have, right now, we have, we have the middle school in Kennybunk that's there.
It's there, we just can't use it.
Jim, Jim, to further that answer, should we stay in the RSU and the Thornton Academy middle school contract not be renewed by the RSU, our middle school students from the state would have middle school choice of the two middle schools, Kennybunk or Mott.
And that's, I mean, that would be the case even if Thornton, I mean, it's a contract. And it's like any contract, it doesn't have, one side or the other can decide not to renew it. So Thornton Academy, even if we wanted to stay there and Thornton Academy says, no, we don't want, we need the space for high school students or whatever else we might want the space for, that opportunity is gone. We're back, we're back to square one when they run around looking for another school to send to, or we're paying to build our own.
Or if we stay in the RSU, they build a middle school in Kennybunk?
That's my point.
Thornton Academy's made it very clear that they are nursing in keeping the Arundel kids and have like all the Arundel kids, but as long as your Arundel kids line up.
Good evening, Matt Semanas. Full disclosure, my wife is a teacher at the middle school of Kennybunk. I spend time on the Arundel School Board. I currently serve on the Arundel Building Committee of Mildredale. And I'm also a board, one of the board of directors for the Education Foundation of Kennybunk and Arundel. First, I want to thank you and your firm for taking the time to, again, to tackle a very difficult subject. You were sort of put in the spot earlier with giving your recommendation, and you seemed a little hesitant to do that, which I understand, but I don't. The reason I understand it is because it is difficult. The reason I don't is because we, as a town, have been going back and forth on this issue for a couple of years now. We were looking for somebody to, from the outside, to come in and give us a scoop and tell us what the real deal is. Couple of questions regarding the, first of all, I'd like to say, I wasn't able to make the meeting, the first meeting, the planning decisions had laid out their plan and their idea and the scope of the work they were willing to do. I really wish we had been able to do that. The committee gave you a charge, and I'm guessing based upon the number of revisions in the last week, you probably felt like you, maybe we should have taken a different turn as well. I know in the last three days, I've seen three different versions of this sheet. Thank you for putting out the second one, so I have twenty pages. Couple of questions, and I'm sure lots of comments. Table six, when we're comparing just the EPS and operating rates, the total operating allocation is a number of $151,017. If I'm reading this correctly, if we stand alone, that's, we're essentially looking to have to make that up right out of the gate. That's $151,000 that we're starting essentially behind in, is that correct?
Correct.
Over on page eight, kind of explaining that $151,000, it talks about some theoretical of, the reason for this differential is the state does not have the level of actual program detail at the TA that it has for RSU 21, and therefore applies rates close to the state average of students attending TA. TA's actual program details submitted to the state for EPS analysis, real EPS rates be calculated, it almost certainly be higher than the state's average, thus diminishing or perhaps erasing. So does that mean that, that because the state doesn't have what's available from TA, that we're at a disadvantage even now? Because they're applying state averages rather than actuals? So that's the reason for that differential? And it's not because it's not available, it's not submitted to the state in the same way that other systems, the programs, the teachers, the salaries, the budget, so that it can be run through the EPS system evaluated by the EPS formula? So if, as a standalone, is a question as to whether or not that $151 would be accurate, would that translate into a question as to whether or not we're being reimbursed under the current EPS as part of the RSU 21? We don't have that detail? I mean, we don't have the detail and we're using an average, then that is applied whether you're a standalone or not, correct? No. Well, the difference is that in, within the RSU, the state EPS is calculated based on the, and the secondary school example, based on the data provided for Kennybunk High School. That data produces a higher state EPS allocation and therefore a rate that's reimbursed than would be applied to Norton Academy were Arundel alone. So the difference is, because Arundel is within the RSU, it's getting an EPS reimbursement that's higher than it would get if it was alone. It's still paying the same tuition. On the revenue side, you're paying Thornton Academy the same amount either way. The state is covering more of it because when you're in the RSU, the state covers more of it than if you were alone. Okay, still confusing, but I'll move on. So one of the notes that I wrote down as you were talking about table seven, the different options, A, B, and C, I wrote down option A was a high degree of efficiency. And thanks to technology, I was able to quickly Google the study of Maine's more efficient public schools that was done in January 2012, prepared by the Maine Education Policy Research Institute of the University of Southern Maine. And only seventeen percent of the schools in the state of Maine are qualified as more efficient, like a highly efficient. So again, when you're put on the spot to say, what is the likelihood of that? You answered it's low. I would say that it's practically impossible, something that you could certainly strive for, but it's not going to happen in the town of Arundel. Next year, the year after, or probably ever, if we're a standalone. Which brings me back to table 11. And again, I guess maybe it was going through this and just listening to how you answered the question you were putting on the spot as to what is your real feeling, that it seems like we've got all these different options and really one is like pie in the sky and isn't really ever going to be attainable in the town of Arundel. So I'm not sure why it's there. I guess unless it's to, you know, show if you strip everything out of the school system, you could technically run for a little bit of money or a little bit less than if you stayed in. But I don't think, given what we're after, I don't think that that's applicable, given that the expert that we hired really doesn't think that it's an option. I just don't, and I'm not sure why it's in there.
Now, but next, when I see that value, is that the cash base, if you only wanted $11.08, what are you going to get?
If that doesn't tell you what you're going to get.
But I'm going to give you a clue, the bare minimum. I agree.
Oh, number one doesn't even address special education.
That's what I was telling you. $11.08, we're going to give you just the bare minimum.
So option A is not included? Oh, no, there's a billion three for rural education in option A. Again, to address the question of what I was doing, it's sort of the giving a fish or teaching a fishing, the, if there'd been an active discussion, in part because of option A, then it's worthwhile to have been there if only to throw it out. But the point is to stimulate thinking about all these things, control, quality, and cost, with something more specific than just those words, but with some numbers on the page. And I think there's been a certain amount of learning going on just debating these numbers here this evening that, in my view, may get worthwhile to present them. Now, what the odds of one being achievable is a second level of analysis that I think is ultimately the one that we're making here tonight and is evolving through the discussion. The analysis that I made that supported your opinion, right? And I wish that, I apologize. Right? I mean, that's really, I mean, again, this is that thing where, you know, as a resident taxpayer, you know, we voted to spend money with you to cut through the BS and figure it out. And as I read through this report, not only is there so much information and it twists you and turns you, it just seems like this BS. Now, the one thing that I, that I noticed was that the majority of your conclusions stayed the same from the original presentation back on, dated on October 2nd, and all of that, the actual data was presented, but that was the date of the draft. And that the special education, essentially leaving the RSU and put taxpayers, Arundel at greater risk of budgetary fluctuations because of variability in expense of education, that it's going to be, you know, an administrative challenge to try and do it on our own. You know, it's been mentioned many times over the last few years, the Arundel-only system exposes Mildredale to the pressures and you can pretty much talk to any parent that had children here, you know, prior to consolidation. Although we didn't necessarily see it while we were here or even while you were here, when your kids were here, when you compare it to what there is now, that's when the light goes on. Which leads me to number five and kind of going back to that thing that just seems to like keep coming up where it's just, you know, you seem like you've got the trap and then you throw in something about, well, you could eliminate building repairs and then you've got some numbers in here, but that's only like a small part of the story because, you know, if I read your summary number five here correctly, you're using strictly the building renovations numbers, but nowhere else is offsetting that with the delivering of education numbers. So again, that seems pretty confusing. But I wanted to go back to number one, because this one kind of confused me the most, and that the educational finance system pays for students differently based on what school or unit they're in. I don't know if that's necessarily a conclusion or if that should have been part of the data that came up with the other four conclusions, but since it's here, still confused. It says that in effect, Arundel pays $15 extra for each student sent to Thornton. Is that strictly by EPS formula, or does that take into consideration the space and the availability and the room at, in the other RSU 21 schools? So that essentially rather than, we did a lot of study early on about when we were probably buying up Thornton Academy contract, it was determined that essentially the RSU up to a certain number could bring in students for relatively, you know, the cost of maybe the lunch and books because seats there, the teachers there, and all that's there. And we were talking huge savings by doing that. But as I read this here, it gives me the impression that, you know, really, it's only a savings of $15. So is this strictly EPS or is this, you know, budgetary numbers? This is strictly EPS. This is the fact that Arundel alone, from the Department of Education's evaluation, would get EPS reimbursement at $6,961 versus in the RSU, $6,976. That's not a big difference, but that's the per student amount that the state would provide. And for secondary students, that difference is 69.11 versus 73.4. Again, this has nothing to do with what you pay for tuition or what it costs to run the program in the school. It's what the state, based on EPS formula, applied in one case to the actuality of RSU 21, its teachers, its students, its operations, versus instead of the actuality of Thornton Academy, the state average because they don't have the actuality of Thornton Academy. And by applying that state average number, those differences arise. It's purely, it's like thinking of having two different insurance companies pay different amounts for the same operation that you have. Has nothing to do with the operation, has nothing to do with you, it has to do with what the system that finances it pays through one insurance company versus another. So that $15 is essentially what it's saying is that for every student that goes to Thornton, the state, the state is going to give us $15 less. So that doesn't really take into consideration the savings for the students that go to MSK if we continue to be part of the district? Well, what it would say is that for every student that seeks to go to Thornton Academy Middle School and went instead to Pennybunk Middle School or Middle School of Pennybunk, there would be a $15 additional state EPS allocation for each one of those students. Okay. Again, I guess maybe because it's, it's kind of in the conclusions section, I think it's not, I just think it's confusing because it makes it look like really it's only going to cost you $15 more if we stay alone, but I think we've seen enough studies that say that the savings, once they actually get into the system, is much greater. Which brings me to the phrase that's in this conclusion in future considerations that I think really hit me the wrong way, is that it says, "In the future, a standalone contract with TA eliminates this possibility, Arundel will bear the cost of $21,000." Why is that in there? Where did that come from? And why would you, as an independent, start looking at, given, you know, a charge of in or out, why would, why would there anything be in here that has anything to do with essentially eliminating choice by a contract? Why would that be in there? And if that would be in there, then why wouldn't we turn that the other way around and look at what would happen if something happened with the legislature where Thornton Academy said, "We don't want to bring the kids anymore," whatever the case may be, but to put those numbers all within the RSU? Maybe you don't have the history and the background information about the Maybe you don't have the history and the background information about the choice-blocking contract. That's been a pretty hot topic around here. So, to see that mentioned in the conclusions and considerations to somehow give somebody hope that that might happen, I just, I don't think it's appropriate in that as well. So, I guess in closing, two things. Local control. Sorry if you mentioned control over the contracts that we have. Diane, I'd like to thank you for trying to help control what's in best interest for the town of Arundel by moving the bond-sharing formula forward. It's quite unfortunate that our other two elected members chose not to vote, put that forward, given the amount of money that is at stake for the town of Arundel. And that's just an absolute shame. So, when you start thinking about control, think about the people you put in office because that's where the control is. And when we have people who, for whatever their reason they be, don't vote for what is clearly in the best interest to the town of Arundel, then control really doesn't make a difference. Thank you.
Before we, I want to clarify something before we go a little further because there was a question from one of the gentlemen in regards to what happens if we withdraw from the RSU. And it is addressed in the withdrawal agreement. And it does say, "All in the first year of the withdrawal for a period of nine years, from July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2023, pursuant to Chapter 219, Title 20A of the main revised statute, RSU 21 agrees to accept students in grades six through twelve of Arundel as tuitioned students." And then it goes on about, "As long as there's no other availability." But I wanted people to understand that that was in the contract.
I want to do a few things. Although I appreciate this has been stimulating and pretty much all agree that we can uh, I appreciate that this has been a stimulating topic and you think that option A, which you want to kick right off, unless you should. My concern is, this is not Arundel, this is not all of Arundel. And how is this gonna be presented to every taxpayer? Are they gonna have this information and understand that A really isn't a viable option? Todd was going about how are we gonna get this out to the public? As confusing as I think this whole paperwork is, how is every voter in the town of Arundel gonna dissect it like we did tonight?
I'm sorry, I don't have a question. I can assume what you said, Dorothy. And I'm gonna kind of be a little bit blunt with this because I get this question asked of me a lot. Every individual voter in this town has a responsibility to know what they're voting on. This document is on the town of Arundel website. They can call my office to disseminate the information anytime that they want. Right now, I've got a video camera running. And if I have to break it into sixteen different pieces, this presentation will be placed on the town of Arundel website through a YouTube link so that people can piece together what they have. You all know the website is being reconstructed. We don't have the ability to livestream or to put a whole document. Even I realize today on YouTube, I can't pull, put an entire document on YouTube. I have to break it into pieces. But I'm going to get that on the homepage of the website tomorrow morning in as many pieces as I need to so people can see that. Tonight, Channel 6 was here, Channel 8 was here, the Journal Tribune's here, Kenmore Post is here. I'm hoping that all of these media outlets are going to advertise, are going to write about this, talk about this. There's a lot of things going on in these communities right now that may overshadow what we're dealing with. But people know what we're dealing with and they need to be able to see what's going on. So, I'm gonna put that up there. And we're working on setting additional dates in locations other than the ML Day school. Possible locations for Mr. Mike's meetings will be Dutchland Golf Course. Another, I spoke to the Lending School today. They're going to give us at free of charge space to use to hold meetings there. And we're going to try to vary the time of day and get those scheduled as quickly as possible, as usual, on the website to get that information out, to try to let everybody know where they can go and get the information so that they can make an informed decision.
Are we getting anything on email?
I, we're waiting to set dates. We sent the postcards letting everybody know. And I want to make sure everybody got their postcards. If anybody didn't, please let me know. But we sent postcards out informing people of the information's on the website, working on a summary and getting that summary printed and mailed out to people with those additional dates as soon as they've been set. And I'm not delaying this or anything, but that's why the postcards went out on Friday because I wasn't going to have time to get those summary reports mailed out quickly enough. Unfortunately, or fortunately, but unfortunately, the document's seventeen pages long and I couldn't, the town couldn't mail it to each individual residence. The post office has a limit on how heavy our bulk mailing can be with our
No, I think it's a good idea for a summary.
But yes, I'm working on a summary. Chuck has provided me summary tables and a summary of this document that we're going to get dates on and mail to the residents. Anybody has any questions at any time, they can feel free to call me. Please direct people to go to the website. I've been updating it as regularly as I can. And as I said, I'm attempting, and even I'm at the breaking into several sections, tonight's public hearing will be on the website for people to read. And I assume I don't have a question.
No, that was it? And it is me, Todd, that keeps bringing it up, so. Mr. Wark, when you went for cost for new debt for renovations at ML Day, you went for Arundel loan. What percentage of the bond did you use or figure for that? What bond, what was the number?
Four million dollars.
No, yeah, percent, so, interest.
Three point eight eight.
Is that a viable bond that Arundel would be able to get?
Yes, I'll answer that question. The town of Arundel has absolutely no debt and enough of an undesigned bond balance that we would most certainly qualify for.
Because I did hear something different on ratings on the percentage. All right. The divide in Arundel has been a very big issue. It's pitted family against each other, causing some families to move or leave from Arundel. The divide, in my opinion, is about middle school. Years ago, a tenure agreement in Thornton was drawn up in order for Arundel to meet state requirements. That agreement has seemed to satisfy some Arundel families, but not all. Staying in RSU 21 after the year 2016, we have choice. Arundel families would get to choose whether to send their sixth through eighth graders to Tams or a middle school up in Kennegy. Staying in RSU 21 gives Arundel the opportunity to stay in a fantastic school system while allowing Arundel to choose which middle school better suits their family, thus starting to heal the divide in this town.
Officer, I just have a question about the curriculum that's currently offered. Kids that are going to go to the Kennegy High School, I know, can participate. My daughter takes several courses at the international baccalaureate level. My understanding is that Arundel students can all choose to go to the high school participating in the IB program as well. And I assume that even if we were to leave the RSU, that option would stay open. But if we were to leave the RSU, the middle school, which currently has an international baccalaureate level curriculum, would they lose, would the Arundel students lose that option?
I know students at middle school in Kennegy from Arundel, they have that option now. That is in the middle school because I don't believe it's
Well, today, I paid tuition to send a kid to the middle school in Kennegy to participate in the national baccalaureate program, you know, which starts off in the middle school and then goes all the way through the high school. They actually get a different diploma. But my question, I understand I can choose to pay for it. But my understanding is that 2016, under the current law at the state level, that any contract that was redone with Thornton Academy Middle School, would my law also give people like me the option to send my kids to Kennegy Middle School and not have to pay tuition for it? In other words, it would just be just like the kids that are sent in here.
That's pending legislation, Bob. I don't even know if that might have died. That was something that was drawn up in the July session. And to my knowledge, there is no, that choice bill has not passed.
Not the choice bill. There is a separate piece of legislation. My understanding was that it had passed and just, and all it did was prevent towns from entering into restrictive contracts.
Let me ask you a question, I think, is that we're ready to withdraw.
Yep.
We'll have an elected school board to make some decisions about how we move forward with middle school and other expectations requirements. And ultimately, that checks whether you have exclusive contract with any other school system and be able to vote if you gotta pay for it.
Okay, so, but if we stay with the RSU, we will definitely have
You have a choice.
Choice, right.
As you have a choice, it says that.
Right. But if we leave, then we may or may not have choice based on what the school board decides and what taxpayers decide.
The voters decide. School board recommends voters will decide.
Correct, okay. But we would, if we were to have, if we have a restricted contract, we can't, we would lose that middle school international baccalaureate program.
Unless we'll have it now? You wouldn't be able to attend that.
Right, thank you.
My name's Scott Worner. I'm a resident of Arundel and I have three children. They're attending Notre Delta. I guess I just want to comment on, Arundel going in on its own. Prior to the RSU, this school was a mess. We had, I was married to a school board member and a volunteer. There were water filtration problems, arsenic problems in the water, water pump issues, broken water fountains, leaky pipes, parking lot issues, boiler issues, separate heating systems. At one point, I had a friend up from Connecticut, this is a great story, and I brought him to the playground. My wife could just help design everything. I was pretty proud that she did a good job on it. And he asked me, "How long has school been closed?" I was a little embarrassed to tell him, but that's where my kids go to school. Since the RSU has started, just look around. I mean, the buildings look good, there's energy in the school, the entranceway looks good, the bushes have been pruned, the lawn gets mowed. I used to mow the lawn here in the summer. And my kids are gonna be all out of school, so I can't do it anymore. And just the quality of leadership. I guess in closing, I'd just like to say that I'd like to thank the RSU for giving us that opportunity.
I'd like to pose some questions that I think we'd all be thinking about perhaps afterward about the idea. And before that, though, I mean, let me set the scene. Let me ask first, why are we here? Arundel has twenty-three percent of the kids, nine and a half percent of the evaluation of the RSU, and we only pay thirteen and a half percent of the cost. How is it a deal right now? That's great. But are there other underlying issues? Clearly, education is improved. We're not considering leaving because we're searching for a better education. That's a negative thing. We have an alternative where we can get far lower costs over time. Not that education costs ever down, the rate of increase. So, there really must be something else driving this school to consider leaving. What are we getting for our tax dollars? Just barely talk about it, we skim around the edges. Right now, there are fifteen hundred residences, residential properties. Nine hundred of us, our parents, pay between two thousand and four thousand dollars a year in taxes. Three hundred of the remainder pay less than two thousand, a couple hundred more. Seventy percent of those tax dollars go to education. What are you getting for that dollar? Do you ever ask yourself that? Or are you just, are you checking where you're paying? If your house is valued at a couple hundred thousand, fourteen hundred dollars of those educational taxes. Another question. What are we receiving for our hard earned money? Let me talk about scores. We've done a variety of statements tonight, but nothing specific. Talking about higher scores before and lower scores now. Looking specifically at Milder Day. Over the past decade, the last decade, the scores of Milder Day compared to three hundred other elementary K-5 schools in this state, we're in the bottom twenty, forty percent. All during the decade. In the last three years since the RSU took over. The scores are way above the state average now. And in fact, the fifth graders this past year, their test scores were well up in the top ten percent reading, and in the top of twenty percent in math. That's fabulous. How can we even consider walking away from that? A point was made earlier too, about the savings of kids that moved during the arbitration process. There were a dozen kids that moved to MSK. Many of them are now in high school. Even though it was necessary to pay for them not to go to Tams. If you look at the savings over their careers at MSK, assuming they go to Kennegy High School, RSU is saving quarter of a million dollars in spite of all those costly illegal fees just for those dozen kids alone, just on the side. One other question is, what are the long-term implications for these children and us as citizens and property owners? Talked about that from a property owner's standpoint. You look over the next twenty years, about a thousand kids have moved through the school in the next twenty years. They're competing with thirteen thousand other kids per year, per grade, at their own grade level. Pretty soon, they got a high school and they've got to compete. How well-prepared are they? I really need to think about it, even though you may not have kids in the school. Finally, here's another question. Is there a potential solution that will provide lower costs, give kids a great education wherever they want to go, and heal the town's root? How do we find a mid-win solution? I'm sure there is one. Let's really continue the process, add our discussions, and find a solution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Su. I am a lifelong Arundel resident. My children are fifth generation Arundel residents. And my father was a student of Milder Day himself. My mother, who I would describe as an avid volunteer, was on the building committee, the building's new addition to the school. And in her name, among many other residents, probably there's a plaque that hangs in school. school. Our roots run deep. Three of my parents, four children, remained in Rundle with their families, nine or 10 grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. My intention was to move back to Rundle when it was time to raise my family, not because school was school choice. I wanted to be in Rundle because of the strong sense of community I felt here growing up. It was a small town and everyone knew each other. When we needed something, parents got together and they made it happen. We were a proud, hard-working community. And I can honestly say that proud is not a descriptive, I would use to describe my community today. Today, we have neighbor to neighbor with disrespect because they see things differently. The type of politics that has taken place in this town is not going to be proud of. So we consolidate with Kenyans, and before we give it the smallest chance, we want out. We start a campaign, scare the community about the cost if we stay, not at all considering the cost if we leave. I agree, because I knew without the numbers, this town would never start healing, and I was deeply concerned about the community. The numbers are out, and now it's clear. Even with the renovations to the Kenyon High School, we are financially disadvantaged if we leave the RSU. What is so disappointing about the whole thing is that this study and withdrawal agreement does not address or guarantee any quality of education. No committee or company was tasked with actually creating a forecasted budget that, budget based on what our K-5 students receive today. The numbers that RSU do not guarantee the same quality of education and administrative system, and will not. Another disappointment is our plan for, upon withdrawal, this contract, special contract of special education. We're just gambling special education, and I just can't imagine why we wouldn't consider it. So we still want to withdraw, because we really don't care that it costs us more. We really don't care about the quality of education. It's because we want local control. Is it worth giving up quality education if we have, can we have local control? Can somebody actually tell me what local control means? Because I haven't quite figured it out. Currently, we have three members on our school board of the RSU, which gives us say in the education of our students K-5 and nine, some of our 9-12 students, and no say in our 6-8. If we withdraw, we have no control for our 9-12, no control for our 6-8, unless you consider having the ability to resign a contract with Tams control. So that is K-5. We will have K-5, but according to these numbers, Rundle website cannot have email, will not have any type of bookkeeping system, and certainly will not be provided by any type of variable factors. Our Rundle historically boasts to save town's dollars. As time goes by, the school will be neglected, teachers will receive less and less support, no state-of-the-art equipment, technology, software, where it will be provided for us to act for students. Parental communication will fall. We will go backwards so that we will have local control. Local control will put us at risk of losing MLVA because we can no longer maintain it. At that point, we will contract out K-5, we will have no control and no community. Please consider what you are risking. Rundle cannot maintain a quality education-based system on our own. Consolidating with the Kenyans would be the best thing to have in the school system since the last addition to the village took place only 35 years ago. Thank you.
I can answer that. I kept you down for a very long time. I can, I can tell you what local control means to you. It means that when everybody in this community gets together, we can do things. We can do whatever we want to do because we're the ones who control the community. If you let 70% of our control or 68% of our control be done by another town, we will lose that control. If you never pass the RSU budget, we've never not passed this school budget in this town through the RSU. That's what local control means to me. I get really tired of hearing how horrible it is here and how late it's been in two short years. The teachers that were here before the RSU are the teachers who are here today with some exceptions, but the bulk of the teachers are the same teachers. The education, as George plays, is stellar today and is stellar before.
I, I disapprove.
Well, the sports, the sports, no, it's not.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you, Bob, but I appreciate that you came into that. Test scores are test scores. And I can tell you from a sister in line who has 40 years, retired initially, who barely passed her SATs as a master's degree in education, and who always tested poorly. I have a son who tests poorly, who was an A-level student throughout his high school and college career. Test scores are test scores. And are there ways to make test scores change? Absolutely. If we focus on it, follow the children, follow the result. But it's this community that can make that difference. It doesn't have to come from you, but we can do that all right, right now into the future as we did before. And if we didn't do it, it's our own fault, shame on us.
Hello, my name is Jane Newey, and I am a resident of Rundle for about 20 years or so, 20, 23 years I've been. Back when my daughter first started at Millard All Day, she had, she did have a wonderful teacher, she had Bev Lo for her kindergarten and first grade. She had her children, which is rather important. But Bev was, she was a very experienced teacher, but because Rundle was in a very limited situation, she had to teach 25 children without any additional support. I was one of the parent volunteers, and she managed that really well. But, and, you know, so there were, there were no teacher aides at that point. But as Gwanyulun went through into her first grade, second grade, and into third grade, the enrollment continued to increase. So she went from having, you know, 25 kids up to 27 kids in her class. And you can tell more in that classroom, you know, there were two classes of 27 each, that the kids were having a harder time getting their needs met. And we had voted in a meeting at Millard All Day that that class would get split the next year into three classes, so some of those needs could get met for the children. When third grade rolled around, that didn't happen, even though the town voted in a school board meeting, because the special aid, special needs had increased. And so, the classroom, what I was told when it didn't happen was the classroom had to be given away to special education. And so therefore, we continued on with this overcrowding, and the needs of these 54 children were not met. And so I'm very concerned that if we, if we leave the RSU and we risk things like this happening in the past, that all of a sudden we have an increase in special needs education that is mandated by the state, then even if we voted in the town to possibly split a class up into three groups instead of two that overcrowded, that those situations, we might want them to happen, but the budget is just not there. And we, again, it becomes a matter of all the pressure being put on the K-5 group, and there's no flexibility, and it really does impact our younger education, which is such a critical time in our children's lives. So I'd like that to be, be thought about.
Hi, my name is Hannah Counts, and I would like to challenge the town to protect this school. My, both of my children have come through ML Day. My daughter said it best at dinner the other night, why does Riley have more opportunities than I did? Okay, she said it a little bit more rough, but the point was there. And she didn't have Spanish, she was never taken out to get a test for RTI, she never had, well, that wasn't a good choice, but, but some of the gifted and talented things that have been happening, none of those things were available. And I was involved a whole lot more when my daughter was younger, because I only had one, but I remember being on the PTA and being, watching the teachers come and ask for money because they didn't have it in the budget. They were asking for printers, they were asking for paper, they asked for all sorts of things, tape recorders. They didn't have some basic, basic supplies. And that was because zero mill rate was status quo. You can't protect this school if you're not going, by standing alone, you can't protect it. You have to spread that cost out. The K-5 can't take that kind of hit. It just doesn't make sense to me that you would put those kids at risk. My son deserves the same amount of money as my daughter does as a high schooler. Well, you know what I mean. I mean, you, you want to have her, his money be the same, that he gets the same value in his school as my daughter gets as a contracted high school student. It's not fair that he should suffer because we dwindled the budget down to such a thing that, that he's not going to have supplies. And I will totally support that the teachers were all the same. Both my kids have had the same teachers, but there is a captain driving our ship right now, people. Dr. Crowley, Dr. Nettie, this is so different than his daughter's. My daughter started fourth grade, no bathrooms on that wing. You know, I mean, disgusting. There was, there was, and this is burned in my memory, piles of metal and junk out of that parking lot. Unbelievable. Frontier, people used to get hit by cars, by bu, by cars passing buses. It was whack. I mean, okay, okay, he's fine now because I'm frustrated, but the point is, is the kids were not safe. It used to take a half an hour to come in to pick up your kids. Do you know how long it takes, even if the line goes out to the road? Five minutes. And as if you're, I mean, the, the facilities within this building, the fact that I'm not ashamed because the facades have been painted, thank you, that used to drive me crazy, and the fact that I was told when trees could not be cut because someone had donated them. Doesn't mean you can't prove, nothing, none of those kinds of things happened prior. We need to take care of this building. This town does not have a whole lot of assets. This building is it. By withdrawing, you are going to be taking away from our kids that stay in our town. That doesn't feel like local control to me. It feels like you're going to be penalizing my son. And, and he only has two years left, so I probably will squeak through, but what about the kids that are behind him? It just doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like we're thinking long-term and we're not thinking about how those kids are going to be impacted. Thank you.
David, I apologize for interrupting you first of all. I, I do have one closing comment, and that is, in full disclosure, I'm on the budget board, and, but to the point you're making, it is the people that are here that get the work done. But I had 15 years on the fire service. You know, it used to just be about putting the wet stuff on the hot stuff. But now, things have changed. You know, now, now there's a lot, greater demands on all the people who are part of the fire department. There's a great, greater training demand, there are higher level of professionalism. I have the highest regard for everybody who was a part of that. I have the highest regard for all these teachers, for all these administrators, for the professionals that are sitting here at this table that have dedicated their life to making sure that this town is run in a efficient, effective manner. However, it's not the same as it was 10 years ago. It's not the same as it was five years ago. And yet, we're, we're asked to try to compare the memory that we had to what reality is today. And it's, and it's an apples and oranges scenario. The reality is that this town, from a budgetary and local control perspective, has sacrificed over a million dollars in purchases of fire trucks and apparatus that we're behind, that we haven't budgeted for, we haven't set the money aside for, and we don't have in this town to protect the people that live here. Why? It's a big budget item number, it's easy to, to continue to duck it every year. Instead, we just put 50 grants a year aside, and they struggle to try to put together enough money to get another annual. Meanwhile, me as the budget board stand around looking at how are we going to bring money from the people that are injured in a car accident to try and see if maybe we can go after their insurance company? You know, it's just ridiculous. So I will put out, and I am guilty of this, as being, you know, vice chair of the budget board. What is the thing that got cut this year? The big loophole. You want to talk about local control? The budget board couldn't figure out what the value was of $10,000 expenditure. And then the selectmen, you know, in all their infinite, you know, wisdom and capacity, couldn't figure out the value of the $10,000 expenditure. And what was it that we didn't fund?
Learning.
Education. Thank you. How's everybody doing? Getting a little while in the truth here, as far as this meeting going on. I'm Jim Wurazay, I've been a resident for about 20 years in Rundle. What I, what I want to get to is, there's been a lot of interesting, dynamic information shared tonight, and everyone here has their own opinion on what's best for Rundle. And that's, every single person is right, and that's, that's what we're all about, is having choice. And what we want for our town, that's why we're all sitting here. My point of coming up here right now is trying to, trying to understand, how is this going to be presented in the vote? It's, it's supposed to be being voted on during the, during the election, right? November? So if that's the case, what I want to try and understand is, right now, Table 11 on this cost-budget alternatives, if this was presented as is to the residents, and I agree that everyone needs to educate themselves on what exactly all this means, and I'm sure everyone in this room now has a really good understanding of what, what all goes into this. You guys have done a great job putting it together, and I am concerned about when it goes to vote, a lot of people are going to look at this and not really understand what's going on. What I, what I want to hear from you guys is, how is it going to be presented? Because right now, as far as I'm concerned, option one, option five, and option six are really not reasonable or realistic for people to be considering. It's be looking at trying to make a judgment point on what they want to happen. I mean, realistically, it's simply going to be coming down to a couple of these that are realistic choices. How, what are the next steps? And how is it going to be presented to the residents so that we can make, you know, the decision we each individual want to make? And for the people that are a little bit, a little bit less educated, that weren't here tonight, how are we going to present it so it's understandable and they can make a choice? Because they will make a choice because they're going to vote, even if they know what they want and, I'm sorry, man.
Finish your talk, Mr. Wurazay. It will be presented in the voting booth as a question. Do you favor the withdrawal of the town of Rundle from Regional School, School Unit 21? Yes or no? Unfortunately, that, that's how it's asked. And how we present it, and I, I, once again, I'm going to be blunt, we mail the postcard to every single vote, every single resident of this town, every single one caught a postcard letting them know there's a meeting tonight. And I counted, we had 89 people here. 89 people. So I put it on the website, and I can't, I can't track how many people are going to the website to look at this. People that come to town People that come to Town Hall and ask, we handled this. If they have questions, I can step 250 feet away from the building right now and discuss it with them. But that is how we're trying to get this. Tonight's public hearing will be posted on the website. I agree, everybody doesn't go to the website, but the people who do come into Town Hall, do ask questions, do get the information. There will be additional meetings set, but I can almost guarantee you with great certainty, I wasn't thinking certainty, I was thinking great disappointment, that I can almost guarantee you that those other meetings will get even less than 89 people in the room. And that is a very difficult thing in a community that's in a position such as this. Because what I hear when I'm out on the street, I'm sorry, I'm going to ramble on here for a minute, but what I hear when I'm out on the street in a rundo is how angry people are that there's no information available. How angry people are that they don't know what they're voting on. And then there's 89 people here at this meeting. Last night, I, I made a joke at the selectmen's meeting, and I said, "I'm going to make 100 copies of this report, and I can almost guarantee you I'll have too many." I made 150 because I was hopeful, and there'll be 50 or 60 still sitting on that table. So we, I do what I can in my capacity as town manager and how I know to try to give this information to people, and they don't turn out, so I don't know that. It's really difficult for me. Tom put it very well the other night, and I hate to put you on the spot, Tom, but he said, "If I told you who to vote for for president, would you listen to me?" And people laughed and...
Not at all.
But, you know, people come to me and I, I, both sides, I think I've been frustratingly to people in the middle of the room here. And I don't know how to get those people, because people are going to go into the voting booth, not knowing, just listening to what their neighbor said, listening to what the guy that knocked on their door said is true, and they take that for fact. So if anybody knows of any, any way to get that information out to people better than we're doing now, let me know. I mean, I would greatly appreciate that. One comment that I will make to the people who are remaining in the room is I did, I don't have the institutional knowledge. I hope someday it say, I've been in a rundo long enough to have that institutional knowledge. But I did some research in the last town meeting one that I could find, um, which was before we joined the RSU. System administration was approved and appropriated at $142,500. So that was 36-plus months ago. So I just want to, you know, lend credence to the, to what people have been kind of beating around the bushes. I don't think that we can do it for that option A. And there are a lot of unknowns, and it's a very tough decision. And I wish I could tell people out of home, but I can't. It's an ethical issue that you have as a town manager. I wish I could say to you, "Hey, listen, we vote this way." And you can't do that because people have different perspective on this whole issue. Whatever their perspective is, they have a right to do that. So if anybody can help us to get the information out there, I greatly appreciate it because I've been trying everything I know I can do to get that there.
Bob, I just want to say thank you for putting the numbers together because this is what we're after, as far as trying to understand, you know, what are the pros and cons of doing this? So the information is really helping personally, trying to, trying to figure out which way I'm going to vote. Because coming in here, before I saw the numbers, I'm, I'm really, truly on the fence. I'm sure that people think I'm thinking one way or the other. I wanted to see the numbers. And that's, hopefully, what everyone's considering is, is the education and the numbers together. Well, thank you very much.
Good time for just a quickie. First one, is there any way to reduce the confusion that we've just spoken about here? The, you could take off option 1, which everyone seems to agree is not viable, not likely, uh, very risky, whatever you want to call it. But is that the most cost option, number 1, Table 11? Could that be removed from this? It's served on purpose, but it's not viable. I have a couple quickies I might ask.
I might ask to make that prefer to the committee.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know I said that. I mean, to, to reduce the, six options is a lot of confusion for people that haven't been in the weeds with all this stuff. I'm just saying, anything you can do as a committee to reduce that by taking off the less than likely option would really help. Secondly, my option, my con, some comment is, when we, when we are asked to vote on a town meeting in the Mariner, there's a recommendation from our Board of Selectmen to accept or reject. Is it possible to have a recommendation from our leaders as to what they think is the most appropriate for the town they are leading?
When the Board of Selectmen makes the recommendation, generally in the town meeting in the warrant, it is for, it is for items and monetary value. Uh, and generally, you'll see two recommendations, one from the budget board, one from the selectmen. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. But I think that on this issue, members of the Board of Selectmen, and if you want to ask them individually how they feel about this, um, that would be one thing. But I think that as a recommendation, um, it's not fair, if we feel differently on the subject, to ask us to vote to either approve or disapprove, either of the articles.
Thank you, Mel. Uh, Mr. Mudarazi's question. We as a Board of Selectmen decided we were going to vote to the community twice within the next week and a half. We're going to go to Dutchell and, and down to the vote, vote yard, uh, two different times of the day. We have accepted responsibility, that's why we, we went, that's why we encouraged the withdrawal process. You know, I can't beat the rest of it. I can tell you that I want the people to be able to make an informed decision. And I think we have the information to make that informed decision. Now it's up to us, it's our responsibility and your responsibility to go to people and say, "Attend these meetings, get to those meetings, okay, which I will post, be there, ask, ask the questions, get the answers you're looking for." It is our responsibility, we accepted this last night, that we have to be as well informed as Trump can make us. And I think you've done an excellent job tonight, because I think there's a lot of very informed people out there as well. You are very, very well informed with what this document says. Now it's up to us to communicate what those options are and what they aren't, okay? So people can make an informed decision. I personally am in favor of leaving option 1 in it because it shows absolutely worst student, worst case. I have no problem leaving any of those six. Because it's trying to take an explanation for people to understand how those, how those came about and what they really mean. But it's our responsibility and it's your responsibility to get the people to those meetings. And that's why we're going from one end of the town to the other end of the town within the next, before the election, to make sure that we can communicate this as best as we can for people who don't understand. But it's our responsibility as well. Thank you.
One of the other things that I want to point out and, and I had mentioned it before, we have media here. You know, we had, we had, uh, two television stations, and there's the Journal Review, and the, the, uh, right. And, you know, that stuff is getting out. It's getting out a lot more than if they weren't here. So I mean, as part of, we want to get the word out to everybody. We're using the, the website, we're using the media, and we're trying to do everything that we can to get as much information out. Once again, you know, we, less than 100 people show up in the town in 4 hours. And, you know, we're asking you folks to get all the other folks engaged.
I'm Steve Hayes, been a resident of Rundo for 20-something years. Uh, I have a question for, um, I'm sorry, the gentleman that we hired to do the study for us. Um, uh, in your option A on the Table 11 there, you kind of created it by doing the Zaire Bones administration piece, which I think you said you did at 15%? And the option, uh, 3 on the standalone was, I think you said 23%, which was the same portion of administrative costs that is being used by the RSU at this moment? Is that correct?
Correct.
I guess my question is, if you work on the economy of scale, and generally you think by having a bigger unit or organization, you can operate things more efficiently, why did you come up with a option that was less than the current 23%? And why, or why also is not there one, a more possibly probable one which would be higher percentage if we went over smaller, even if we tried to manage those costs? To me, it seems like it might be more likely it's going to increase, less likely it's going to decrease. You gave us two on the decrease and one at the same, so what was your thinking in that?
Well, the first was... The first one was to answer the question, could we do it alone or cheaply? How could that be achieved? And the answer is by the reverse of the diseconomy in scale and administrative efficiency. And not providing emergency money for unforeseen special education needs. So it was an extreme case to illustrate the question, in order to be less expensive, what would we have to achieve? In other words, if this was a committee setting out to establish a budget, we say, well, what's the low and what's the high? What would we have to do to hit the low? And that's the rationale, if there is one, for the first option, B. Reason for not going 28, 30, 35% was that the expense at the even proportion was substantially higher than in the RSU. And one could, you could draw your own conclusions going further that it didn't seem to shed any additional light on the consideration.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as following up that question, I was thinking of the historical data on what percentage administrative costs had been prior to the RSU. And, um, the town manager, you just mentioned you dug through the records and you came up with a figure, and you threw out the number, but you didn't say what percentage that was. I don't know if you know what percentage that was as far as, you know, looking at, do we have historical data of how we have operated when we were by ourselves?
They don't have that information right here that we should do. I think we have a school budget that...
And, and the planning decisions, gentlemen, did you look at historical data of...
They did look at the, uh, the year before Rundo joined RSU. I don't recall right now, but the administrative budget was, but Todd said it was in the order of 140,000. And that would have been more, would probably have been 20% or more of the total of that town.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. On your option A, Table 7 on your hypothetical budget, all those are taken by percentages of our own. And we talked a lot about system administration, and you've got a figure of 140,000. Todd said 142.5 is the last year, three years ago? Is that right? You were in the district. If you use a 3%, and you use a 3% increase in a lot of these per year, per year projections is how we use. If you take that 142.5 and you project 3% over three years, you're going to come up with somewhere around $144,000. So that $140,000 is not too far off from our... And what you've also done on here is you've taken the assumption that all of our special ed kids are going to be out of district placement. And with a new special ed director and some good planning, a lot of those kids could be brought back into district and recognize the savings. And also, if you look at that last year budget, I think you'll find that your transportation is about half of that. So this, this is numbers here, the, the system administration is only off by four or $5,000. Um, I think your transportation budget is way high, and special ed, I think we could recognize some serious savings. So I think that your option, option A is not really that, that unrealistic of, of a chance to get there. Um, one big concern is the, is the renovation dollars. And we're looking at $715,000 on 79, it's Rundo's first payment. If we were on our own, and actually with a new number under that, minus the $16,000, we're looking at $356,225 if we renovate our own school. So we're looking at, you know, 30, $350,000, $342,525 savings per year on renovation alone if we're not in the district. The other issue, I mean, in the best-case scenario, there's $1,543,000 over the course of the loan that we could save. And it's more like $5 million that we would save over the, over the life of the loan. In 20 years, we're going to save $5.5 million by not being part of the full renovation plan. One of the other scary things is, um, and this will tie into the local control comments as well. And the, the, uh, the plan itself costs a $131,000 payment of a million-dollar loan that RSU borrowed. Town of Rundo voted 72% not to accept that loan. Yeah, we're paying it off. A comment was made about we've never approved an RSU 21 budget, yet that budget represents 73% of our local property taxes. And one of the other things, um, we take, I said at a budget, uh, a selectmen's meeting earlier this year where they talked about taking $5,000 away from the library because they wanted to lessen the burden upon the taxpayers. And they also talked about a great length on several items in the $20,000, $25,000 range, where they cut back to try to save some money. And you put things back into municipal budgets this year, they were held off, such as the multi, you know, very expensive fire trucks and things. You try to save money to offset the impact of the RSU 21 budget. If, if we leave the district, we're responsible for our own building, and that's our only capital expenditure. Just this last, last summer, $250,000 of repairs were done to KES. Around $40,000 of that, let's see if we can find it back, was a rundo taxpayer money, which we didn't have any vote on. Um, Thorn Academy put $1.5 million into their athletic facilities, tennis courts, lacrosse field. Um, the additional cost of Rundo was $0. If the roof leaks at Thorn Academy are costing $0. If we're out of the district and the roof leaks at Cayman High School, it would still be an option for us. Our cost is $0. Um, our cost for Cayman High School, if we're out of the district, is $0. The biggest problem with remaining in the district is we have a $715,000 item, single line item. That would be the biggest item in our municipal budget. I, I understand an Amazon school board would be fought with cutting only from the K to 5 budget. But what staying in the district does to us, it only gives us a municipal budget to cut from. A municipal budget that's already seen the stresses of being part of the RSU by holding back on lunch expenditures, by cutting the library expenditure in order to try to save money. So, 2/3 of the people in this town don't have kids in school, but they have an additional burden. And where are we going to come up with $700,000 to break even on municipal budget? The Town Hall of Administration account is $569,000. You add in $180,000 for the recreation department, and you close those two departments, we could break even. If you stopped spending $500,000 a year on road repairs for the next 20 years, you'd still have to come up with $200,000 more per year to offset this renovation plan. And where are our roads going to look like in 20 years? The other thing, um, those are my train of thought. Give me a minute. Getting old. If we're, if we're cutting things like $5,000 out of the town budget, we're cutting $20,000 items, we've got $715,000 that we can come up with. we've got seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars we need to come up with, it's going to be approved by the ten month voters. We can vote it down, but it still may pass, and most likely it may, may not pass the first time, but it will, it'll surely pass eventually. A scary thing that I picked up some information last night, the Cayman High School renovation committee met last night, and the architect gave them eight new options. The lowest option is fifty-three million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's eleven million dollars more than the one we're looking at, the seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. They, they've talked about turning zero into dormitories. That's going to be a major capital expense to which Rundle will be responsible for. If we're out of the district, the only capital expenditure we have is this building. And I know it's going to be a lot of stress on this town, but it's up to the new school to make, and it's up to the voters of this town if I decide what you want and what you won't pay for. And I fought the school budgets for twelve years, and I'll fight for them again. The gentleman with the glasses who made the last comment, twenty-three percent is what a hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred would have been of the last school budget for the town.
I, I would like to cancel Jean's comments. I've been a selectman for over thirty years. Every year, when it comes budget time, we look at every item. We try to keep your taxes as reasonable as possible. This year, when we came to that item about the library, we looked at enough people in Rundle using the library. The library requested an amount that would cover everyone and all of them. The budget board looked at the amount of people using the library and felt that the amount they requested was a bit unreasonable. So for the number of people using the library, they came up with the alternate number. So we did not cut the library costs because of the school budget. Every year, in thirty years, the town has cut town items to help cover the school budget. Whether it was the last year, the John zone, whether it was when my kids went to school, because we always wanted our kids to have the best education that we could give them for our tax dollars. But we do not have a lot of tax dollars. This town is becoming more and more a senior citizen town, of which I'm one, and on a fixed budget. I mean, when you are on a fixed budget, you're looking at every expense, whether it's the budget board, whether it's the roads, whether it's the fire department. And again, we're looking at it in the town hall, we've been looking at it in the town hall for years. It's a case of taking baby steps because we want to make sure our kids have the best education that we can afford. And yes, we always have put off town expenditures so that our kids could have what we felt and we know.
That's a minute again, it'll be pretty quick. So all the numbers that we just rattled off in the last few minutes supports the exact reason why we came through a third party to try and sort everything out for seeing what we had. Two questions of five people. Those five people are each the selectman. First question is, do you have enough information to make a recommendation? If so, what is it?
Matt, as long as I've been sitting on this board, we have never made a recommendation on a citizen initiative. Never on labor, on the excess tax question, on zoning questions, on acceptance of streets. Simply don't do it, don't think it's our problem, I think it's quite inappropriate to do that. And we do it on the warrant article, it's our article, of course we recommend that. It's kind of silly to have that there.
Still having, would you like to answer? Mr. Boyd?
I think as leaders of this town, we should have some recommendation. At this point right now, I personally, I cannot make a recommendation. I'm still undecided, I'm still trying to understand all the information.
Last but not least. Oh, Dana, that's sorry. I should have gone way to put out, but I was saying it was important to last. Dana?
I guess I agree with my colleagues here, but I will say that I see one, one option a lot riskier than the other. And I'm not a big risk person. But whatever the vote is of the people, I will buy that, I follow them in my stance.
Now we'll say the best of the latter.
Well, I was reading today an article in the Call of Chris Harold that talked about education and educating our students and consolidation. And when you look at the cost of consolidation as compared to our costs more alone and, and even including a renovation, that we don't know what it's going to cost or what's going to happen. We want to give our students, we give them agent programs that we can. And our K through five, that we had before, and I put four kids through this school, and five grandchildren. Their range of programs was limited. And what we had here in the school, I mean, we had an okay school, I'm not saying that we had a terrible school. But the vast improvements we've seen since joining the RSU, I think, have been absolutely tremendous. And our kids have that vast range of programs, and I have two grandchildren in the school even today. I think that when you look at sharing the cost of administration, we talked about administration costs. Well, back then, we had a part-time superintendent, and that superintendent had a full-time secretary. That was administration. That doesn't work anymore, because we have to have someone who do the finances. So you've got to have a part-time superintendent, somebody in that office full-time, you've got to have somebody that handles the finances. So you may have some savings in transportation. And when you're talking about transportation, our town provided the, most of the mechanical services for those buses. The town has enough of its own fleet, yeah, we can't do that anymore. So now you're talking additional cost of transportation. You're also talking to transportation director or someone who can handle that. So you're talking vastly more administrative costs. And when it comes time for the budget board to meet and for you to go to town meeting, and that budget comes up to the town, and you're told that this is for your kids, that last budget of six million dollars, the people passed it with very few questions because it's for your kids. And I think that, that in this town, our best option to take, and I'm going out loud in here, is that, that we stay in the RSU.
Thank you, Velma, for actually standing up for what you believe is right in this town. After we hired somebody to do a study, presents that study, which is clear, maybe there's a little fuzziness because there's so many numbers in here, but the conclusions are clear. What is in the best financial interests of this town, for only one out of five to take that stand is truly disappointing.
I, I tell you. What this report does point out, that there were, there were risks associated with both. One is more risky, the other because of the variable costs that we have no control over, okay? It's not a question of right or wrong, it's a question of, because, because it's a question of what are we willing to risk as, as a community? That's what it's really about.
Exactly.
It's not right or wrong. The quality isn't right or wrong.
I didn't say it was right or wrong, I said I was disappointed. The board of selectmen go line by line item for a twenty-five hundred dollar item, whether they think it should pass at budget time or not. And granted, this isn't budget, and maybe this isn't something that has precedent set. But this is seventy percent of our budget, the education of our children going on into perpetuity. This isn't a twenty-five hundred dollar item, this is the largest amount that our tax dollars in town spend. So it's just disappointing to see how much time the board of selectmen, the budget board, will spend on a twenty-five hundred dollar item, and they come up with recommendations for all fifty items that are listed there, but they won't come up with a recommendation on, on this. It's, it's disappointing. You can take that how you may, I'm not, all I'm saying is that it is disappointing when you go and you vote for a twenty-five hundred dollar item, and you say, well, yeah, the budget board thinks it's right, the selectmen think it's right, and then the largest fiscal deal in the whole town, nobody, nobody, one person.
Well, I'm disappointed that you don't really understand what is in this document. Because what this document has been giving us, what this is giving us is, is the trant and the high level where we have to decide what the future is going to be. This is not a budget, this is possibly a budget. And so if you're trying to pin it down to not as dollars and cents, several people have tried to do, that's not what you had to do.
This was, this is a document that was created so that the residents in town could make a decision. And four out of the five selectmen either don't feel comfortable making an opinion, or don't feel that this document provides them enough information to make a decision. Is that legitimate?
Yes, Matt, we're, we're
Is what?
She said, this is why we don't make a decision, aren't those valid? Sure, then you're not going to be disappointed.
No, I can be disappointed. I absolutely can, and I am.
I just need to clarify my comment is, I made a comment that I think that in selection, you should, one way or another. But I'm not ready, I haven't digested this fully. So it's my, my right, if there are things that I'm not sure, if there are things I still don't know, then, you know, I need to dig into this a little bit more. For some of you, it's clear enough, that's fine, but for me, it's not. And until I, until I really fully digest, then I'll, then I'll let you know whether I support it, whether I don't.
I think the only actual numbers in here are the renovation numbers that were provided by Andrew Dahl. Which haven't, no, no, it hasn't, but the, the renovation plan that represents the seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars hasn't been school board approved. And the committee last night looked at options that are far more expensive.
See, I see it a little
So this, you see this, this is hypothetical.
Yeah, but I try to explain to Matt, I see it as two, two real issues. One is the risk of trying to build the budget with not doing the special ed, it's going to be what the administrative cost is going to be. But we need to, we never do, we're absolutely right, okay? And on the other side, if we want to stay in the RSU, normally we're going to have additional costs if, if in fact both renovations occur. Both of the two, you're really, both of those two things, and we have to decide what our appetite is. It's not a right or wrong, it's a question of what our appetite is going to be for those things.
I would like to make one more comment, and this is a given, your taxes are going to go up. Your taxes are going to go up whether we're on our own or whether we're in the RSU. So your taxes are going to go up. So when I'm sitting with the budget board, when I'm sitting with the selectmen, and we're looking at that budget, we decided this year that the town was no longer going to cut the town budget for things it needed, like raises for our employees. I mean, we were very reasonable about it, but we went a little bit further this year than we have in the past few years in trying to keep your taxes steady. So no matter what you do, your taxes are going to go up, they are just going to go up a little less, one option than the other.
Hi, Stacey Leandry. I just wanted to point out that, yes, taxes are going to go up, that's one thing we can count on. But children are our future, they're the future of the whole, this whole planet. Whether we have children or not, it's about the children, and I think that's what we need to think about. What's our town going to look like in twenty years if we can't offer a quality education? I can give you a good idea of that, having looked to move farther up north in Maine. Any town that my husband and I look at has no quality of education because of his age, we're all going to get older. That's a fact of life. If, you know, we can't let that happen to our children. We need to just protect our children and continue to provide a quality education for the future of the town.
Just wanted to, James Lowery, I wanted to make a point, clarification on one of the things that John mentioned a few minutes ago. At a hundred and forty-two thousand for administrative costs, if you were to take that annually at three percent over three years, it would not be a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and forty-six thousand, it would be well up into the hundred and fifties, in excess of a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
The, the rest of, one more time here. I would like to correct one statement that was made earlier. Mr. Renal indicated that the high school building committee came up with a different one, as the architect indeed came up with eight options. As you can see, a member of that building committee, if you go listen to the podcast, you would understand that those options include a donation of ten, an expectation of raising ten million dollars in private funds to fund the performing arts center. So the number comes back down very considerably. Did have a point. I, I'd really like to go back to table number, table number, for just a moment. There were comments made about New debt and the difficulty of raising some seven hundred thousand dollars at the sixty-four level. You've got to compare that with the three hundred and seventy-two thousand that you have to raise, so it's the differential that you're concerned about. Again, looking at, comparing option C with even the sixty-four, let's, let's say that we decided to stay in the RSU and the cost sharing never came to pass. After, and we stayed at sixty-four, we would still save four hundred thousand dollars a year, whatever. That's a fair chunk of change, eight million in twenty years. On the other hand, it did pass, and we went to a hundred and zero for New debt. You're talking about twelve million saving in twenty years. The, as I said before, column number ten simply isn't relevant. The three-time cost sharing committee did not vote for the New debt committee. It is not hoped to be voted on. If we, if we choose to stay in the RSU, expect there will be cost sharing go not too long, not too many months afterwards. And ninety-ten would be an alternative. Alternative would be by the sharing that we would be voting on.
We are, we are going to have other meetings. So please, if you have, talk to your neighbors and if we're to make this meeting, we're going to try and stay with the times. So the people who attend a meeting in the evening might be able to attend a meeting at eight, nine o'clock in the morning. Different locations, we're going to send cards, we're going to put it on the website. So talk to your neighbors and let them know, because we want to get to as many townspeople as possible. neighbors and let them know, whether you want to get to as many townspeople as possible. You know, make sure we get it published in our local press, I think that's a great way to reach people, certainly those that might be seniors that don't believe in it. If that's been in the neighbors, and we will make sure that, with the report here, that we will make sure that they're published very well.
Uh, this is just an aside, but I'm a Yankees fan and hate being called a Red Sox fan, and I have inadvertently referred to Sam Stevens, a big reporter from the Kenmont Post several times this evening, and Sam is actually from the York County Coast Star, I apologize for that, Sam.
There's 915, and I think that, saying no further questions, we want to call this a cut-off. Thank you.